We are going to call the common council to order. I'm going to ask our clerk from afar to call the roll.
Alder Person Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
He is excused.
Battali.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Nine present, one excused.
We have a quorum, please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alder Person Keen.
Brisham. Here.
Sorry.[56.12][56.12](laughter) Just so you know.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the public hearings this evening, if there's no objection, we'd like to go out of order on the agenda and take up item 27, which is a summons and complaint against the establishment on 64th and Greenfield, the spot. If there's, is there any objection? I'll ask the city attorney.
No objections.
Now, this is the spot on Greenfield, not the other place on Beloit, which also has "spot" in its name.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is number 27 on your agenda. As you are aware, it was delayed or adjourned until tonight for a subsequent hearing or an argument on the license and health matter that occurred in a prior date. I'm here to tell you today that the licensee has filed a conditional surrender of all licenses at that property already. It is effective as of November 28th upon approval of the acquisition of that property by the Community Development Authority. And so, at least as of this point in time, I'd ask that the council table this matter, not receive and place on file or do anything but table it. The reason is because between now and November 28th, if any significant incidents should occur at this location, the council could then take from the table this item and go forward with it. I've had extensive discussions with the attorney for this licensee, and although he's not able to be here tonight, he did say that I should present this to the council as though it's an agreement between the two of us as a way to settle this matter universally. Now, this is a proposal to the council, so you're not obligated to accept it, but there have been a lot of work behind the scenes to ensure that this is a smooth transition in which the business closes without an appellate right. Any rights of relocation, or waiver, or anything, or appeal to the circuit court has all been waived. So if the council should choose to do so, a motion to table would be the way to do so.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move the item to table.
Second.
There's a motion and a discussion. Is there, if there's a motion and a second rather, is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I have a question for City Attorney Decker. What's the status of the spotlight? Are they open? Are they allowed, under this tabling, allowed to be open until the end of November? Tell us about that, please.
Yes, so their license is still valid as of right now, and it would remain valid until November 28th. On that Sunday, it would be surrendered, assuming the CDA has approved the acquisition of that real estate on the 9th. But yes, they could operate between now and then, and that is why I'm asking to table it and not receive and place on file, because I'd like that to still be pending during that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Attorney Decker, if, say, something bad happens there, would we have to call a special session of the council to act immediately to, would that be, or would we have to wait till the 16th for our next regularly scheduled meeting to take action? Or...
As a result of, if the council would table it tonight, the council at any point in time could take from the table. So 24 hours' notice, schedule a virtual meeting, and then essentially do what the council is anticipating tonight, have the two 10-minute arguments orally, and then proceed that night. And then, the decision will be effective the moment the council makes it. So...
But then, in that case, they'd have these appeal options and all that.
Correct, just as they would have tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Battali.
Yeah, the, you know, the fact that is that, you know, I like to use the, I don't think it really fits, be compassionate on the fact of the spotlight, because it's been a nuisance for a long time, for many years. So, you know, the fact that is that I, tonight, as our city attorney did address the fact that we'll give them until the end of the month, but the, you know, the fact that is the attorney last time, you know, he was convinced to come in front of us tonight, which, you know, which he did not appear based on what he addressed, some of the issue to our city attorney. But the fact that is that I'm not really, in some way, I mean, fine, I mean, we can just let it slide for the next 20-some days, you know, but I'm not very happy about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 27 is tabled. Thank you. Now we will go on to item D on our agendas. We have two public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing number one.
The 2022 City of West Dallas Mayor's Recommended Budget.
Turn it over to staff.
Okay. Rebecca Grill and the city administrator/clerk. I'm joined with Jason Kazmerik, who's our finance director. We'll be going over the mayor's recommended budget on behalf of Mayor Devine. The City of West Dallas underwent a review of our vision statement and our strategic plan earlier this year. The vision statement was updated to that we would become the preferred city for visitors, residents, and businesses, and the mission statement stayed the same that it was previously, to provide cost-effective services for the health, safety, and welfare of the community, quality living and working environment, and a positive progressive approach to the budget and operations of the city. The updated strategic plan goals are listed here in detail. The highlighted, the topics are community, destination, financial, infrastructure, and organizational excellence. In the recommended budget, there's a number of quality-of-life initiatives that the mayor wishes to focus on if the council approves for 2022. The first of that is a reckless driving deterrence program. You give me a second to find my notes here. The reckless driving campaign includes allocating current funding for the, in the police budget, to reckless driving deterrence, piloting a program to install cameras at various intersections in the city where a high degree of reckless driving takes place, utilizing Wisconsin statutes, negligent operation of a vehicle to charge people negligently operating. These penalties have a maximum forfeiture of $10,000, which is different from the reckless driving forfeiture that has a maximum of $200. The thought is perhaps that might deter some people from participating in reckless driving. The second quality-of-life focus in the 2020-2022 budget is enforcement and nuisance control activities. The first would be garbage cart standardization. There's 900 residential properties that currently do not have the approved garbage carts, and the mayor's recommending an ordinance change to require all properties to purchase one at 50% of the current rate through April 30th. Another portion of the enforcement and nuisance control would be looking at reorganizing how code enforcement is done. There's a number of departments that cover, that handle that. Maybe there's some opportunities for streamlining and efficiencies. So the mayor will be working with departments to look at that early in 2022. The third would be residential, resident engagement and partnership, looking to work with neighborhood residents to increase awareness. There, where there, there's a rise in the presence of nuisance animals, to organize neighborhood cleanups, eliminate locations for nuisance animals to inhabit and access food sources. Along those lines, also have a nuisance animal abatement focus to provide increased funding for nuisance abatement and control, look at other options to disrupt the, those animals, and then involvement of possibly a company to help with that. And then finally, under the nuisance control, look at ordinance changes to increase the, or reduce the timeframe to reduce, to eliminate nuisances in people's properties that harbor animals. The third thing is the neighborhood lighting program. This would be providing funding for installation of solar security lights in areas where there's less, where it's less light lit at this time. This has been shown to be a deterrent for criminal activity. The fourth is diversity, equity, and inclusion activities. The human resources department is working to conduct an audit with our insurance company and establish an action plan. We will be having staff development and training regarding that for emotional and social intelligence, regarding implicit bias, and then working to get grants for an inclusive and accessible playground, to provide opportunities for children of all abilities to play together. And finally, have a pilot program for garbage and recycling. Currently, during weeks where there's weather events or a holiday, crews work to catch up. They do five days of work in four days, and this, there's a significant cost of overtime. So there's, the mayor's recommending a pilot program where if there is a holiday or a weather event, that the people that would have their garbage picked up that week would wait until the following week to get picked up. So those are the quality-of-life initiatives that are part of the budget. Each year, we talk about the challenges that we have in balancing the budget, in providing high-quality services, and these are a number of those we have, and I'll go through these in a little more detail. We have people's limitations, the taxpayer limitations. We have, we have issues with our street lighting, and we need to convert them. Our facilities need a lot of repairs and maintenance. There's significant $65 million of repairs and maintenance we have on our buildings. We have aging infrastructure due to the time when a lot of the city was built. Our water and sewer lines need to be replaced. We, as well as other employers, are having a challenge recruiting and retaining high-quality employees. And then the last two are limits that are imposed upon us by the state of Wisconsin. In regards to the taxpayer limitations, this is, these are the demographics of the City of West Dallas. We have a little over 60,000 people. Of those, the median income is 52,000, with 12% of people in poverty, and then 15% of our residents are over age 65 and presumably on a fixed income. The streetlight conversion project I mentioned before, it is going to cost between 40 and 60 million dollars to convert all of our streetlights over the next few years. And the city facility costs, in '18, we had a study where it was found that we have over $60 million worth of repairs that need to be done on all of our facilities. That cost will go up each year to the, over the next 30 years, it could get up to $92 million. Here's a little bit more about our aging infrastructure. We have a 70-year replacement cycle on our streets, 159 years on our water main breaks, our water mains, which is why they, some of them break a lot, and then our sanitary sewers are about at 81 years. Personnel, we have about 664 total positions. 544 of those are benefited, and 493 of them are funded by our general fund, and 51 of them are funded by other funding sources. In 2021, our salary was equated to 80, I think it was 85% of the budget. In 2022, that's going up to 87% of the general fund budget. As here, you can see the details and the changes. The salaries did go down. We had some reduction of employees, which I'll go into later. Almost 60% of our employees are employed in the public safety department. That would be our police, fire, building inspection, and planning and zoning, and the other departments are broken down, as you can see here.
So, a couple of the limitations that we have to consider when we're, when the mayor's putting together the budget is state-imposed limitations, and there's a couple of major ones to think about. The state imposes an expenditure limit on one hand, and a levy revenue limit on the other, and just kind of going into both of those. So there's this expenditure restraint program that's in place, and the way this works is every year, the state looks at inflation and says, if you can keep your expenditures under this inflationary adjustment, we'll give you additional state aid, and that's around $1.5 million a year for, for West Dallas. Just looking back historically at what West Dallas has been given as far as allowable increases, the average over the last seven years has been 2.1%. I do know that there was, I believe there was, like, 2014, it was substantially lower. You guys had to deal with maybe like a $400,000 increase or something like that.
In 2016.
In 2016. But the average has been 2.1%, and actually, historically, that's still kind of low, considering inflation generally averages around 2.5%. So, again, this is one side of the limit. This is the expenditure side. Now, moving on to revenue limits, the state also imposes a levy limit, and the formula is different for this one. So the expenditure restraint said you can raise your expenditures by an inflationary amount. The levy limit calculation is based only on net new construction, and net new construction is essentially, you know, the net of redevelopment in the city, and that averages for the City of West Dallas only 0.5%. So it's quite a, quite a low number. There was an article that I read from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities that said around 1/3 of the communities in Wisconsin have a lower net new construction of about So, looking at this, that's definitely a tight limit for our budget. You know, and the state doesn't really give us a lot of other options, so we're heavily reliant on property taxes. Based on a 2019 report, Wisconsin municipalities rank seventh among the nation on being most reliant on property taxes, and no other Midwestern state relies so heavily on taxes. So they put these limits on us and also don't give us much, any other options to work with. Some people bring up the fact that, you know, there are referendums that can be done to exceed levy limits, and some communities have done that. 31 municipalities have passed referendums over the past few years. But keep in mind, referendums are designed for generally one-time increases in service. So, for example, if you wanted to go from a part-time firefighter setup to full-time, you might want to go to referendum to make that increase. Referendums aren't designed to just, to be used every single year as a way to balance a budget. And if you want to tackle that public safety comment?
The Wisconsin Public Policy Forum has also looked at the different police budgets in the state of Wisconsin, and most police and fire department budgets in 1/3 of the municipalities in Wisconsin shrink, have shrunk from one year to the next, and it occurred in all-size communities in the state. And this is primarily due to the restrictions placed on us by the state of Wisconsin with expenditure restraint and levy limits. In 2022, all the information that we provided regarding expenditure restraint and the levy limits, what that practically means for us as we're putting together the budget, is that there was, we were limited to increasing our cost to, by $350,000, which, when there, your budget is 65 million, that's a very small amount. We had to work with the departments and the mayor to reduce a gap of 1.7 million between what the departments had requested and what we were able to actually fund. In the past, we've also had challenges. They get exceedingly more difficult each year. As Jason mentioned before, 2016, we had a challenge where it was just, we were limited to a $400,000 increase. So we, in that year, we did changes, significant changes to our healthcare. But over the years, we've done gradual changes to healthcare and pension contributions, limited wage increases, reducing our capital funding, elimination of positions, consolidation of our customer service. Here at City Hall, we have a customer service center, and we've also spent a lot of money in technology to reduce manual tasks. Position changes from last year to this year, which are proposed in this budget, consolidation of six positions into three, elimination of 15 positions. Three of them were part of our reduction in workforce plan that we had last year. Two people were reassigned. Nine of the positions that are proposed to be eliminated were occupied by an employee, and then 0.75 of those were vacant. We reassigned five people into other positions, and then five positions are unfunded. Go in a little bit about our revenues and expenditures. So revenue is the money that comes into the city. As Jason explained before, the majority of that is from taxes. As you're paying your taxes, that amounts to $42 million of the revenues. We also get some money from the state of Wisconsin and other intergovernmental organizations, about $13 million. We collect money for license permits and fees, penalties and forfeitures we charge for service, and then there's a, a number of other miscellaneous things that we get for revenues. This breaks it down in a picture that 65% of what we're getting is property taxes. This is where you can see the overreliance of cities in the state of Wisconsin on property Expenditures, we have, there's, there's four different categories that our departments are put into. It's so that we have some, it's done by the state of Wisconsin, and there's consistency amongst different municipalities as much as is possible. So this is just outlining the cost of each of the departments. The general government in this proposed budget has gone down by 5.5%. Public safety is recommended to go up by 2.1%. Public works are recommended to go down by 4.4%, and then health, culture, and recreation down by 7.8%. And this is just a picture of that. You can see the 59% is to the public safety, and the other departments are listed there. This slide is just really for historical purposes. The recommend, the overall tax rate, tax rate that we're estimating is about $28.2, but we haven't gotten all of the taxes from all of the different taxing authorities.
I can give a slight update to that. My latest projection for the overall tax rate is actually going to be closer to $27. Couple of the, other jurisdictions have actually shown a decrease in their levy for the upcoming year.
So the, the average increase for a $150,000 house was estimated to be $23 for the City of West Dallas taxes. And this is the public hearing for the budget. The council will consider the recommended budget on November 16. We'll take any questions, if there are any.
Thanks for the presentation. Are there questions from the common council on this public hearing regarding the budget? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience on public hearing number one? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public hearing number one, and I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing number two.
Resolution to approve amending certain activities of the fiscal year 2019 annual plan of the Community Development Block Grant Program relative to the reallocation of the CDBG-CV funding in the amount of $131,285.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Steve Scher, manager of planning and zoning, also oversee the Community Development Block Grant Program. So tonight, tonight's hearing, number two here, is to fulfill a federal obligation to transfer money or reallocate money that was formerly approved in 2020, April of 2020, for the COVID funds. We're going to be reallocating or transferring roughly about a total amount of $131,000, transferring it from one account, two different accounts, to two other existing accounts. So the first of those reallocations or transfers would be $34,485 from a food and meal delivery program to a health department awareness and outreach program. Both of these programs are administered by our health department currently, and the meal program was, the initial proposal last year was to issue gift cards to low-income, low, moderate-income residents that could use those gift cards in exchange for buying groceries, perhaps at the farmer's market and other places. However, HUD rejected that proposal as it didn't meet the federal guidelines. Instead, we would have had to develop, like, food boxes, either prepared from a caterer or some other restaurant, and they would have been distributed by our health department or city staff to people in need, and the logistics of that just wasn't, wasn't going to work. So instead, the idea would be to transfer that money instead to the health outreach program, which is going to be used to purchase a software by the health department. It's called the Health Record System, and what it's going to be used is to cover the cost of purchasing that, that software, and the system is ultimately going to be used to help support the health department's ability to effectively monitor, track, and respond to communicable diseases, activity within, within the city and, and the city's jurisdiction, as well as other programmatic services and supports. And the second reallocation is going to be for, from a mortgage assistance program to a rent assistance program, and that rent assistance program is managed by community advocates, which is a sub-grantee of the city, and they provide support for, you know, Milwaukee County Rent Assistance is one of their, one of the resources they provide for people in need. So the mortgage assistance, we only had one actual applicant for mortgage assistance, and the reason that is, is because the federal government, it gave banks the leverage to extend mortgage notes to, to their customers, to their members, which basically solved the problem on the private level between banks and the mortgagees. With rent assistance, there is still a need to... With rent assistance, there is still a need to bolster that program with its additional cash and thereby provide help for, for people within the Milwaukee, within City of West Dallas, Milwaukee County area. So this is the overall budget that was approved last April, $762,000, and these are all the existing programs within, within that adopted budget. And again, the underlying components here, the Health Department Awareness and Outreach and the Rent Assistance are the two programs where money is being transferred from, from one into those programs that are underlined with the given amounts on the far right. So that concludes my presentation, but if there's any questions at this point, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I just have a quick question, Steve. I know how budgets work, so I understand that, that larger dollar amount on the mortgage versus rent or assistance thing. So this is just for this year's budget, and this is all COVID-related, and we're expecting or hopeful that in the future, the budget for 2023, that it's, oh, this is this year's budget we're talking about.
This is, yeah, so it's, yeah.
We're editing the current budget.
Right.
But I'm, you know, maybe it's just me, I prefer to help homeowners over renters. I like people who invest in their properties, and I'd like to, I'd like to make sure, but as you said, we only had one person apply for the.
And again, the reason was, you know, that the, the banks or the, where they held their note, were able to extend the term of those mortgages, which in itself helped their customers.
Right, so people that need the help this year, and.
Correct.
Okay, and so those extension, those terms that were, where the banks were able to help, that was going forward for the life of their mortgages, I assume, or do we know?
The exact amount of term, I'm not sure of the exact term of that, but.
Depends on individual loans.
Depends on the situation.
Yeah.
In terms of the rent assistance, our goal last year in 2020, in April, at the outset of, you know, COVID more or less, was to help roughly 40 or so individuals or families with rent assistance. And to date, we've more than, nearly doubled that with about 73 people that have received assistance. So, and with, in regards to rent assistance, that's for a four-month period. So it's, yeah.
And do we, do we know the breakdown on those renters? Are a lot of them duplexes, do we know, or huge big multifamilies?
I could look into that information.
I guess, I guess just conceptually, I like to help small businesses, not, not big conglomerates, but I'll talk to you about that. I'll give you a day or two to get those numbers together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Sefansky.
Steve, can you explain a little bit? I'm trying to wrap my head around the food and meals delivery that you're cutting out. I know there's some churches in this city that have been doing, you know, giving out free food to people who are in need of it, and they're running out of food because people are coming and getting it. So what's the reason for pulling the money out of the food and meals delivery?
Well, the, the program as it was originally designed last April was to hand out gift cards, which could be used at the farmer's market to, or, you know, other, other local places to purchase food. And HUD rejected that, not meeting the federal guidelines and trying to control, you know, who has that gift card, and then that gift card may end up being sold or given to someone else who's not necessarily needing it. So it was kind of hard to track. So that's why HUD rejected that, and we're sort of shifting gears to sort of reallocate that money to another Health Department program. And, and those other programs you mentioned, like within our community, the churches and so on, they do offer, you know, food pantries and food services and other clothing and other products that, you know, can be, can be given benevolently. So fortunately for, for the city, we have those types of organizations that can support those in need. But I guess for that one reason, with the gift card exchange, that was, that was the reason why we couldn't deliver.
Okay.
That program.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grisham.
I just have more of a comment than a question. I think it makes sense to move the meal monies over. I just want to highlight for those that may not be aware, federal government has given a lot of money to programs for those with food insecurities, and we also have our Stockbox Program through the Hunger Task Force, which is helping many in our community. So I, I thank you for your presentation, but I think that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the members of the common council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience on public hearing number two? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two. And we will now move on to item E on our agendas, citizen participation. The common council may receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce to the council their name and address, sign in at the podium, and limit comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council cannot take action on topics raised by the speakers and will not discuss topics with the speakers. I know that, just based on conversations I've had in the last few days, that we have several people that are here on one issue, and if you are generally okay with that, I would ask that you maybe pick a handful of you, and then one of you just have everybody here for that issue stand up and be recognized, so we know that you're all here in numbers, rather than have the same concerns being repeated, would just get redundant for all of us. So I see we do have some people up at the moment, so I will begin the process.
I'll make it quick. My name is Mark Vicena. I live at 1338 South 65th Street. I got mixed emotions on what's going on with the Spotlight. I wanted to tell you, when I left here two weeks ago at halftime, between me and my car out in the parking lot, and it's, it's on video, I was confronted by four people out there, the two owners of the Spotlight, the lawyer, and some gal. I was threatened. They told me to watch my back. Now, I've been threatened before in different situations, but this is my city. I mean, that's my neighborhood. I got threatened because I got up here to speak my piece. And I'm speaking my piece again today. They just left, but they can watch the video. I'm going to free up some time for all the people here that are with another bar, but I, I hope that when you vote, the licensing committee and this common council, listen to the people. I've been fighting the Spotlight, I've been fighting the 6500 Bar, which is now closed for years. I've been told these things take time. So this bar was found guilty of operating in a manner that constitutes a disorderly or riotous, indecent, and improper house. You guys voted on it. They were found guilty, and now they're operating for another 24 days. I trust that the legal department and that the city knows what they're doing, but I got to put up with this for another 24 days. I'm going to watch my back for the next 24 days, but I'm not giving up. You know, we're going to win, and so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vicena.
Hi, Judy Schmidt, 2521 South 75th Street.
And I'm Nicole Schrader, 2536 South 76th Street.
And we are here for NOBAR at 7534 Bulleye Road. I'm glad you're going to block off the alley, that's great, but there are, that's not the only problem. You never came around to talk to any neighbors, which were, you were advised to do on August 30th. We have a petition with 52 signatures, not one or two, 52. We do not like the name G-Spot, it's very vulgar and appropriate, and with a name like a G-Spot and hours from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, we'll have people.
Lots of people thinking that this is a strip club.
It's just not going to bring, it's going to bring in the wrong kind of people to our neighborhood. Why not G-Space or Glenn's Tap? 6:00 AM or 2:00 AM are not good hours for a bar in this area, because it's a quiet neighborhood, working, working people have to get up and go, go to work. If you're only going to have street parking, the dental office already uses a street. You're going to have the street parked up from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM. There are neighbors, and there are, oh, and where are their company, where is their company supposed to park? There are no complaints on your 68th Street bar, because there's multiple bars in that area, and you have a warehouse across the street, the whole block from Mitchell to National, totally a different neighborhood. This is mostly a residential neighborhood, just not an area for a bar, even if it was a bar before. You keep bringing up that you're going to live in the house next door, and what is going to stop your patrons from parking in your driveway, which is alley access. Two people that live in the house now are the ones that cut the grass and shovel the snow for the house and the bar, and they've lived in that house for 30-some years. So we do not want or need a bar, and I think with everybody that showed up and supported NOBAR has, you know, shown that. So everybody that's here with me, please stand up. Thank you.
And then I was going to say something about the name. I was actually going to read the dictionary definition of what a G-Spot is, but I think we are all old enough and we all know what G-Spot is. But there is a family dentistry right next to the bar, so I have one question and one question only. When people are driving, they're small kids to and from schools, church, or sport events, and, you know, kids are very curious, and they say, "Mom, what does G-Spot stand for?" How are you supposed to explain to your four- or 10-year-old child what a G-Spot is? That's all I have to say. And the other thing is, when we had the bar there before, those people, I work 12-hour shifts at a hospital, and there was some people out at the bar that were leaving, going through the alley, and they were using one of someone's parked vehicle as a toilet. I found that very offensive, so I took the initiative to go into the bar and talk to the bar owner at that time. He gave me two words and said, "I can't do anything about it." So how do I know with you telling me you're going to put up security cameras, if I don't go in that bar with an issue, you're going to take care of my issue when I come in that bar, and it's going to be resolved, and that person is not going to be allowed in your bar anymore? Because that's vandalizing our property, and nobody should be, nobody should be fleshing their private parts around, especially when we have children in our alley. So how do I know that's not going to happen again? And that's the only thing I have to say.
All right.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Hi, my name is Melissa Shroby. My address is N-89W-16135, Main Street, Menominee Falls, and I am the person who we're voting on for the license for the G-Spot. So there were so many other fish to fry that I have not even addressed the issue of the name, because there was parking and all of the past things that happened. The name is, if that is any source of contention, that is like the least important to me. That name, we will not call, we'll call it "The Bar" right now, because that's not going to be a name. I understand, you know, it was meant to be funny. It's not funny to everybody. It's gone. I mean, I wouldn't do that. If that's what it is, forget it. We have gone through, and yes, we, we have talked to the development committee, we are in the planning committee, we have had our plans approved, we have talked to the dentist office next door, we have signatures from them, they actually support us in opening the bar. We've talked to the, the person who's behind us, the, the person that owns the drapery business, he has also signed a petition. We did go around, we have a petition with 220-some signatures, all of about five or 10, only five or 10 are not within 10 minutes of that bar. We did go around and talk to people, you know, I work 12-hour shifts too, so my husband went when he could. So I'm not really, I can't say where he went, but I can tell you that he went all over the place there. We, we, my problem is, I understand what happened. They, they had a terrible experience, but that was not, I cannot be held responsible for that. All I can do is not let that happen again, and we have offered security cameras, we have talked about blocking the, the street off completely, there's, the yard would be fenced in, like, there, there's a plan, and if anybody wanted to see it, I mean, I hope that you guys had a chance to see what we, okay, what we came up with. All I can say is, you know, this, we have not had these problems, and we, we would do better. I can't understand, I can't see how it could be worse than what they've had before. So we're working very hard. We've done everything that the council has asked for us to try to just continue and move forward. So I'm just hoping that, you know, you see the work that we've put in and the dedication, and that speaks to who we are as people and as business owners, you know, and that, and that's, this is the best we can do, and we're trying. So I hope that you take that in consideration. We don't want, we don't want to have a bar that we're not proud of either, or we don't want to destroy your area. I mean, that, that would, it wouldn't make sense for anybody. So thank you very much, and I hope you think about that when, when you vote.
Thank you.
I have another comment. Where did these 200-and-some signatures come from? It's going around bars in the area, and you got them from the low-income renters on Bulleye Road and behind. Yes, this is what's going around. One of Sir Greg's patrons is going around in bars.
Sorry, our city attorneys.
So where did your petition come from? Or all your signatures come from?
I beg to differ with that, because I was one of.
Okay, I'm sorry. Folks, no, I'm sorry, we, this is not for debate among the audience, this is for you to address the council.
I did address, I signed up, I'm sorry. I'm a consultant working with the bar owners, a longtime resident of West Dallas. I own the restaurant in West Dallas called Cuginos. I have two degrees in hotel/restaurant management, so I'm helping them to do the proper thing and get, do the right job. We have, I have the Rapina.
I'm sorry, can we have your name?
The Rapina family behind.
Can we have your name and address, just for the process?
Sure.
Thanks.
Donald Sager, 2130 South 82nd. The Rapina family is behind this. Mark Lutz would have been here this evening, but unfortunately, he went, well, he went pheasant hunting in Nebraska, otherwise he was going to be here to represent with me. I have a lot of background and know many people in the city, and I know this is going to be the right product. It's not going to be some crazy thing with kids screaming.
I'm sorry, you can't, you can't engage, sorry.
Well, my background is restaurants and bars, okay?
Sir, you have to address the council, you can't be responding to the.
Okay, sorry. Again, I, I believe we're going to do the right thing. The bar's been there for over 60 years, it's been a bar. What's going to become of the building if it's not a bar? What is your proposal to put in there if it's not going to be a bar?
Sir, you can't address the audience, I'm sorry, you've got to address the 11 of us.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. I know where you, I know what you're thinking, but you can't, you can't answer the questions, it's not an engagement moment.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to address the council on any additional?
My name is Jerry Yulrich, 1977, South 102nd Street, West Dallas. I've been in the bar business, owned a bar in West Dallas for 25 years. I'm here with the support of Glenn and Melissa, and also reps on a lot of other bar owners. We realize there's been some bad bar owners in this city, but there also has been a lot of good bar owners. I've seen their plan. We can't guarantee anything, but I know them, know what they've gone through, and I know what I've gone through over 25 years. I believe in this city, and I believe in what we do. And my only regret is, if I was healthy and a little bit younger, I'd be in business with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dominic O'Sonio. I reside at 9627 West National Avenue. The, where I want to bring attention to is, from 98th and National or 95th and National, going east, there's a red light there on 95th where Lincoln and National crossover. On the right, there's Landmark Credit Union. Drivers think they can go through that red light. Now, the drivers coming off of Lincoln don't do that. It just seems the people that drive east on National from 98th to 95th, where the red light is, they can just go right through. I've seen drivers stop, they look, the light's red, and they go right through. And I've also seen drivers coming up from that hill on 99th to 95th, trying to make the light, and the light's red, and most of the time, they go right through it. If they had radar there, you could make $2,000 a day in revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation? You're technically only supposed to go up once, but since you're speaking for 15, 20 people, I'll let you go again.
I just have another question.
I just have another question on how you think the G-Spot is funny, how that name is funny, and how she said she had a lot of passion, and she went through and talked to all these people, yet I think our whole block, especially if you're going to put the bar two houses away from where I live, nobody came to my door. So I'm not understanding when she came around to talk to all these people, because I'm pretty sure everybody in our audience over here, nobody came and knocked on any of our doors, not one. So when she said she had dedication, and she said she was going to go around and talk to people, that did not happen.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation?
Jason Pawelski, 933 West National, fellow bar owner. I've seen them run a, a good, successful business, and these guys are in their business, working with the neighbors, hands-on, tight people. I think everybody deserves to give them a chance. They're trying to help the community, they're going to bring jobs here. I understand the name seems to be a problem, I'm sure they will work with it, but I think that they do deserve a chance.
Thank you.
My name is Glenn Shrubie. I live in Menominee Falls, but I own the doghouse, GM Doghouse. I just want to bring reference to you, to you, to the neighbors. What it is that...
Mr. Shrubie, you got to at least look at me when you're talking.
Our bar, our bar is located in, in, right in the city. I mean, we, we have residents all around us, and we're right in the middle of the block. We have renters next door, we have, it's an apartment building, we have renters next, we, the whole block is, is right there, and we are very courteous to all of our, anybody that lives around us. That's, that's a real important thing to understand, is that, is that I, I respect you as, I respect them as my neighbors, and I would never want to ever have a, where that there would be a conflict. And if there is a conflict, I'd rather have you come, would come to me, you know, and be able to, and I'd try to fix it or situate whatever happened, you know? Like I said, is, we've been in the, in the, one more, and there are no cameras, okay? So it would probably be hard for the last owner to really understand that, okay? And not knowing that their neighbors were being, you know, that all this was happening, you know, which I can understand. And, but this won't happen with, with us as the new owners, because we have eight cameras in our, our bar right now, so that we can watch everything. When there's a problem that the police, police department come, they come and they download everything. So it kind of, you know, we, we're here to help the society, I mean, help the city not to, not to be, you know, negative toward it, you know? And I want to, just want you to know that we would work really, really hard to take care of you as our neighbors, okay?
Thank you.
Isaac Hernandez, 2518 South 76th Street. Just stood up to say, if you have somebody urinate on your property, if you had someone pour trash on your property, use foul language in front of your children and in front of you, disrespected you, how would you feel on your property? I'm appealing to that, and I hope you guys see it this way. When you've been trampled on, disrespected in the past, what makes you think, if that happened to you, that it won't happen again? Because I'm a different person now. Experience tells me otherwise, so I am appealing to you, to your humanness, not to let us down. That's my appeal. Please think about that when you make the decision.
Thank you.
And one last thing, we also are taxpayers, hard workers, want the best for our families and our children. I got two granddaughters that play in that alley. I don't want somebody coming down there speeding. I already had a tree knocked out, debris all over my house, or front lawn. At 2:00 in the morning, not fun. It really isn't. This is serious.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council under citizen participation? Okay. Hearing none, we will close citizen participation, and we will move on to item F. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed on the top of page two. Moving on to item G, mayor's report. I just have one thing to share. On Saturday, November 20th, the West Dallas Community Improvement Foundation is going to be holding a food drive at the West Dallas Farmer's Market. We're asking people to donate non-perishable food items to help support all of the local pantries in West Dallas. There's information on the city's website and social media, but it runs from 11:30 until 2:30. It will be at the, if you're familiar with the market layout, there's a city logo trailer there that will be the collection point. There will also be the market, as well as food trucks, and coffee, things like that for sale. The market will open as usual at 1:00. The first 100 people to donate five items or more will be entered into a prize drawing for some of the new city logo merchandise, and you can also help by donating online when you visit westallisfoundation.org to make an impact on the lives of some of the needy people in our community. There is more information, like I said, on the city's website and social media. So that's the only thing I have for the mayor's report this evening. Are there any reports from the older persons?
Mayor Devine.
Elder Person Grisham.
I feel we need to lighten the mood a little bit here, so I just want to share how grateful I am for our West Dallas community that came out and just really shone a great light on our trick-or-treat this past Sunday. I saw families and a sense of normalcy that we hadn't seen in a long while. In fact, Channel 4 picked up a nice segment showing the Little League in District 3, as well as, I actually made a little stop over at my house, we had a blast, gave out books to the kids, but I want to give a special thank you to one of our residents, Mariah Nord, who is looking to work with Dana and I to put together a neighborhood association. She and Myra Becker came up with the idea to do a Halloween house decorating contest. We had so many properties decorated, and the top three received gift cards to Half-Nuts, which was very fitting for more candy treats. But again, I just wanted to thank the community for doing such an outstanding job in working together and making this a very safe, fun trick-or-treat this year.
Thank you. Any other reports from the older persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of October 19th, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. Under J, we have no standing committee reports this evening, so we will move on to item K, our consent agenda.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
There's no objection from any of the council members. I would move that the consent agenda be approved as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are in recess.